You are watching XS Laporte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is November sixteenth, twenty twenty two meeting of the Michigan City Commission on the social status of African American males. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org. Hello, everyone. Thank you for attending the social status of African American males. Monthly board meeting. Today we would like to start the meeting off and call it to order. Our meeting right out right out the top. So first we'll start off with uh before we do a roll call, we start with the pledge allegiance of everyone. Your blessings to the pledge.
United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you guys for that. Um so next on the agenda before we go to um what we immediately have to get to. We'd like to at least do a roll call and if I can give that out to the interim secretary, let me do a roll call for us, Ms. Commissioner Lee.
Commissioner Cox.
President.
Commissioner Millsap.
Present.
Commissioner McCormick.
Present.
Commissioner Carroll.
Present.
Commissioner Fly.
Present.
Commissioner Conley.
Present.
Councilwoman Tillman.
Present.
Commissioner Benny.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Hogan.
Present.
Roll call. Quorum has been established.
Okay, thank you, guys. The quorum has been established. And so what we would do before we actually get into our actual agenda. We would like to a point of order and um we have to redo our elections. Even though they interim elections, we have spots in our positions that's open right now that needs to be immediately filled. Um those spots are everyone actually from secretary treasurer, vice president and president. And so we want to open the floor for nominations for the president first, then we would do the vice president second. We do the secretary next and then we'll do the treasurer. So with that being said, um
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I nominate Kenny Fly for president.
But second.
Okay, uh
Just turn that on as well before you may just
Um
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is before any nomination um is presented before the commission, can we all know since there has been concerns in regards on who's been on the board for a year, who can actually be nominated?
Yes, that is that is a factual statement and that's why we're in a situation where we are now have to redo the elections. Uh councilwoman Tillman and liaison Tillman and board member Tillman. Um yes, let's get it acknowledged first and foremost that per the bylaws.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh could I have a the floor for just a second?
Uh yes, you may, uh Mr. Care, but if I can finish my statements about what I'm finna say and then I will give you a floor for a second. And also I see Ms. Moore's hands up also. Um so categorically categorically, um it must more Ms. Moore handles up first and then you will go second, but please let me get out Miss uh address Ms. Tillman. Councilman to councilwoman Tillman's um concerns. So with that being said, we have um with the nominations per the bylaws. And as they stand right now, anyone that's nominated has to be on a board for a year. And with being on the board for a year, their attendance also have to be above or at seventy percent. And also they had to have to be participating. Had participated or participating in a subcommittee prior to this meeting. And with that being said, I can address or we can also pit out who's all eligible if you want right now. So we also know who's eligible for any nomination. Refer to the packet. Okay. Okay, so the persons that's eligible, um can you uh so can I pass that down to interim secretary to bring that to our attention before we can all know before we even?
Absolutely. So Commissioner Lee, if you look at the packet that was sent out to all the commissioners per the secretary report. The last fifteen pages of the report indicate all the persons who were sworn in by the city clerk. And those fifteen pages show people how long they've been sitting on this board, when they were sworn in and their eligibility. According to our bylaws, it states, please consider people that have been on the board for a year. And of course, like Mr. uh Fly said, attendance, our policies are the bylaws are very clear. So if you look at the last fifteen pages of the report, you can see and begin the nomination process based on the people that are eligible to vote.
Okay, while you guys is taking that brief second to overlook that, can we go to Ms. Moore that was next in line with your question? Yes, Commissioner Moore.
Yes, I actually don't have a question. I have a comment. We elect officers in January. Well, this is
We can hear you on the TV. I mean, uh
Okay, so um elections are to take place in January. So why are we nominating officers for two months and December?
I thank you, Ms. Moore. And that's that's a good concern, good question, but we have a reliable answer for that. Um per the bylaws, per the bylaws, it states that whenever an office is open. Actually in the office, we immediately, yes, sir, you can turn to me, sir.
Pastor.
Per the bylaws, whenever a office is open for our next meeting, immediate meeting, we supposed to fill them offices. Um it doesn't actually matter constitute if our actual elections for annually were coming up less than two weeks. Um anytime the office is open and available, we have to fill it. And but one thing, uh Commissioner Moore is, we immediately have another one too, but that one will last a year. This election only gonna be to the serve out until our annual meeting, which is good because in two weeks, we're, I mean, in another month or so. We have our annual meeting and that'll last for that year. But as per bylaws, we have to do things decent and in order and that way we don't have to go back and rebuttal and go over things that we should have got passed already. So um that that's the answer to that if I that helps you. Now, nextly, um I answered commissioners, Ms. Tillman um questions and so we're going down to Mr. Carroll, Pastor Carroll. He had concerns or want the floor, you can have them, sir.
I have a comment. Um I remember when I first came to social status. Uh I was very honored and I still am. I guess I'm old patient. We had the honorable Arthur Payne as our chair. And I don't remember any confusion or a whole lot of emails coming in or Discord. Uh we had our bylaws and we went by them. Uh commissioners were always open to speak in love and it was demonstrated through our actions. Uh our main and only focus was our kids, our African American males, uh females, kids of all cultures. It seems like uh everybody wants to be somebody. And this is what we're having our discord at. And I'm gonna leave you with this, this, and you already know it, read it. If my people which are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways. Then will I hear from heaven and then will I forgive their sins? We need a healing of our commission. And that's all that I have to say. Thank you so much. God bless you.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Commissioner Carroll. That was very heartfelt, man. I felt I felt every word you said, brother. And hopefully we as a commission um can take heed to some of that uh goodness she has provided for us, Mr. Carroll, Pastor Carroll and Commissioner Carroll. So we'll go to nominations of Mr. McCormick. Did he have a nomination at first? Or you want to do it again, Mr. McCormick? Commissioner McCormick.
I nominate Kenny Fly for president. More seconds.
Um nominated Colonel Fly for president of the second was by uh I heard it first time.
I think we both say same time.
Willie or Stacy?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by this uh Commissioner Benny. Nominations are still open. Well, yeah, I know we gotta have um a vote on us uh on a second, but I also wanted to make sure we hear the other nominations of if there are any other nominations and we can put them all on the floor. And then we'll go accordingly to who was nominated first and get their vote, who was second like that. So um as of right now, it seems like no one else has spoken up or uh wanted anyone else to be nominated on this position. So we'll do a vote as Commissioner McCormick stated. The vote for nominating president of the Board of African American American males in Michigan City. But we can start off, Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Uh Commissioner McCormick.
Aye.
Yeah, Commissioner Pastor Carroll, Commissioner Fly, aye, Commissioner Lee.
I'm here, Mr. I'm here.
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Commissioner Conley.
Aye.
Commissioner says um liaison slash councilwoman, Ms. Tillman.
I abstain from any um
I abstain.
These nominations at this present time due to that, I believe that the way that this is being conducted is still not in order.
Okay, that has been taken in heat. Hopefully we can make it really in order by another month with the annual meeting and put all this behind us. So we can really get on course with our objections and missions. Um Commissioner Benny, okay. So uh with the vote of um
The rest of them.
Oh, the bottom, yeah, Commissioner Moore.
I'm.
Commissioner Hogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Hogan also, Eda Johnson. Sorry, brother. Please forgive.
Aye.
Hey, that looks like that's all commissioners. No one's online or Zoom that I can see. Okay, as of now, we have a vote. Um secretary, what was the numbers?
Oh, your extension. The vote carries.
Mm hmm.
Okay. It looks like there's uh no, no, uh no objections to that and one abstain.
Point of order. Wait. That's why, that's why I said.
Okay.
Yeah, we wanna know. Yeah, we don't wanna go into this again.
Oh, go back, see what's the problem with.
Yeah, so cuz that's what we need to do. We need to make sure that everybody's on one accord.
Okay.
Get this done. So if we can just hear from Ms. Tillman, yeah, what she think the process should be cuz we would
I greatly appreciate that.
Yes, sorry about that, Ms. Tillman. Commissioner Till.
I greatly appreciate that. Um thank you for those comments. However, I am not the commissioner's parliamentarian. I am a voting member along with all the other commissioners. This is just a matter of opinion. Everything is in black and white. Um it's easy to interpret. It's not really vague. Um the elections that was done at our last meeting. True that there was oversight because those that was nominated, not just by myself, but those that was all in attendance. The bylaws have been the bylaws, so that oversight was again nominating individuals that had not sat in commission seats for a minimum of one year. With that being said, prior to that, when a person chooses to step down or resign. That is in president or vice president or secretary's positions. Before their resignation as a courtesy or actually according to the ordinance. They are to appoint the next person that is to take that position and then that the commission then should for come forth with a vote. We did not follow those procedures. At all. Myself and all those that's sitting here today. That is my reason moving forward that I am going to abstain from any votes.
Okay, uh with that being said, Ms. Commissioner uh Tillman, you have the right and you have good points. You have a fact that came with your um your briefing. And um at the ultimate end of that, you said that's what your reason of abstaining was. Um I didn't really hear anything that you're saying that we should do actually right now. So you're just kind of been your stance out and why your stance is that? Um I assume that we carry on now that we do have it on record of why she's abstained and what's her thoughts of it was um. As of now, uh
Would you like something more in depth?
You know, but still and see what it is is I'm just
To say this for the longest, but I don't engage in the back and forth on it.
I understand that.
And again, I'm not the parliamentarian. There is not a parliamentarian for this permission. There's a couple of things. One is we are the only board and commission that have bylaws. To be honest, there is no need for bylaws because we have the municipal, uh the city ordinance which convey what our bylaws are. This can be perceived as a sense of control. Um there really isn't a need to streamline it in depth because at the end of the day, the municipal support what we're supposed to do, our ordinance. It supports what the bylaw says. So I would make a recommendation that the bylaws be removed. Because there's no need for the bylaws.
Make a when she's done, am I able to like comment on that?
Yes, you can have the floor also. It's only if Ms. Tillman is
And the other thing would be now if that is requirement per state that we have to have bylaws for this particular uh commission. Then I'm not aware of that. Um and again, as far as voting, then those that were voted, then what could have been done or should have been done is a motion to suspend the rules and those that were nominated and voted upon. Carry out until the end of the year. And then we start fresh.
Ms. Tillman, you're doing perfectly. What we wanted to hear you, you hear you thoroughly and um with that being said, I um you know, with with myself, I'm not pursuing to uh why we have bylaws or why we shouldn't have bylaws. We all up here as one and so we think as one as a body. And hopefully agree to disagree ultimately. Um I know we got a very short little time before annual meetings. And um I know we've been um we've been kind of stagnant and complacent, but only because we wanna make it right so we wouldn't have to backtrack and that's understandable. Um so far, so we should keep bylaws or should have bylaws. I think once we get past this or this object that we have right now, that we can go to that and and vote on it or whatever procedures that need to be done. To get a yes or no on that or get a dis ruling on that. So that is able to be ruled on. But as of right now, I was think of the only way we can get to that part of it is to get past this part of it. And so um I'll give the floor to Mr. Carey. He also had a had the floor too.
I was just going to agree with Councilwoman Tillman. I think that these bylaws have been weaponized. I think they have stopped us from being able to get any work done in the commission. Uh I'm actually embarrassed to have meetings week after week after week, month after month about bylaws and rule changes on this commission. Uh I apologize to everybody for leaving the position early. I think that I had a hand in causing this chaos to happen and I do apologize for my part in it, but um this has to stop. These rules are being used to get rid of people. They're being used to punish people. It's just a waste of time. All of our time is being wasted having discussed what rule and who's following over some bylaw that we all just made up. Um I hope that once this is over and whoever temporarily isn't is president or whatever positions need to be filled, I hope that we can have a serious discussion about eliminating these so that we can get back to actual business and not playing games with each other. Is that
Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Hogan. That was well taken and uh I think a lot of us agree with you. We do feel the necessity to move on and um do the best we can. And uh yes, we have been in shambles somewhat. But I will say that we are not at disarray. We are at our strongest when we're faced with adversity. And so I wouldn't think of this as a weakness of ours. I would think that as a growing process. And we are growing together and all getting understanding together from the outside looking into us. The public may see, mayor may see, the council, council may see that it seems that we are um uh in shambles, but actually we all kind of are newer group to each other. We are not only do we sit on the same board, but we have all different characters, unique, unique qualities that we bring to the board. And we all do have a certain degree of pride and egos, which I think should be left at the door, but unfortunately we are all a human. Um and that's something that's gonna be part of our human nature. So we agree, we we would like to be settled, do our missions. Get goals accomplished. What you and uh Councilman Tillman is speaking on is totally accepted by us with open arms. No one's right, no one's wrong. We will try to agree to disagree. Commissioner uh McCormick had his hand up and light up, so I give the floor to him.
Yes, I'd just like to say when it comes to our bylaws, I don't see how it's possible for us to even have a commission without bylaws. Our forefathers and other other commissioners before me, they had these, they they signed them, they made them. They said that we need these rules because we knew we was gonna have situations that we had to deal with. And and true, no more than now more than ever, these bylaws are guiding us through a dark moment. See, when we didn't, when we wanna deviate it from these, when we wanna deviate from the bylaws, we started operating under personal, our personal feelings towards each other. The bylaws are right there for us to follow. None of us are, now no one on here is bigger than this group. If we can have that understanding, we won't, we wouldn't have too many issues on this board. And Mr. Hogan, prior to you leaving us, leaving stepping down, you did awesome job.
Yeah, I agree.
And we, you did an awesome job. We was moving forward in a way that was um it was awesome to see the move the direction that this board, this group was moving in. Um I still think there's hope for it. It's not like it's all just destroyed. But to suspend our bylaws to to say something about what Ms. Tillman said, to suspend our bylaws is one thing if we have people that's not qualified. I mean, forgive me, people that have not been here for a year. I've been here for more than a year. Mr. Fly has been here for more than a year. Mr. uh Millsap. There's other people, Mr. Cox. If if you guys, if you guys say that you don't wanna do it, then go to the next. And if we don't have no one that wants to do it, then we should suspend our bylaws and then move forward. Um the way it was done to us, now all of a sudden we get these great explanations and and we get scorned a little bit. At the end of the day, we just need to do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McCormick. The points was very valid, made sense. Uh we have another commissioner wants the floor, Commissioner Millsap.
Mr. Chair. Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, you're open to.
Obviously, you feel all the qualifications to be president.
Yes, sir.
So for the sake of this meeting, because if you look, we have a large agenda.
Yes, sir.
We're only supposed to have an hour per uh ALCO.
Yes, sir.
Can we just deal with you as being the president, run the meeting? We can deal with the bylaws after the first of the year when we have our own election.
And then we go forward.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Yes, Commissioner Lee.
Because because in our previous meeting, Mr. Fly was nominated and voted upon to be our vice president. Wait, so if now that he's been elected president, there is no officer in that position.
Which Which is why we should be able, he should be able to run the meeting, today's meeting, because we have in our election next month, correct?
No.
In January.
Right. Today's the next month's meeting.
Right.
And then we can deal with all that, but we need to run today's meeting today.
Then that actually is a request for submissions.
Right.
That actually what you're making is a request to suspend our bylaws and so that's under the parliamentary rule, I'm sorry. That's what he just said. And so either we're going to
Do the elections, yeah.
Take one with the elections or we're gonna suspend our bylaws. We can't have it both ways.
But thank you. Did I give me the floor?
Keep in mind of her counsel lady Tillman.
Yes.
It's not valid legally because we're the only board that has
It's legally valid.
But we're the only
Yeah, it's legal.
That has bylaws.
Okay.
Am I correct? Okay, so therefore that's just running.
Right, I'm with you, Ms. Till.
With the bylaws, the later date and we get today's comments.
Okay, I have the floor one time and um we're gonna
Are we continuing on with the
I'm I'm about to, I'm about to. So what we're gonna do um for my uh not suggestion but obligation, so we're gonna continue what I was doing or what we were doing. We have elected a uh president and we're gonna go to the nominations of vice president. We're gonna go to the continued nominations. That way we can do per bylaws as it says, immediate next meeting, get the offices filled. So we're gonna do that with anything that's after that, like we only got an hour. We have um agenda to go, so we're gonna do it the same way we did it last meeting with the elections and appointments. And um with that being said, we will open the floor up for vice chair.
Like the nominee, uh Commissioner McCormick again.
I second. Nominations are still open though.
I'd nominate Commissioner Cox.
I agree. Point of order.
You're right.
I knew this was gonna happen, but point of order. Um the last meeting, uh Ms. Benny nominated me. Everybody declined the proceeding to to be the vice president. I was the only one left. For whatever reason, I was the first one nominated, but I never received a vote. I immediately was skipped over to to Ms. Lee nominated you and it went to nominating you first as opposed and and you made it clear that you never wanted to be the vice president no more. Um So at this point, I just I just think we need to move on. I believe that I should be uh vice president based on the fact that you stepped down and you never did accept it and you wasn't here. Thank you.
If if I may, if I may.
Yes, you may, Ms. Ms. Till, I mean Commissioner Till.
This would be correct for the simple fact, again, if we would have requested a motion to suspend the rule. Those that was nominated due to that you were not, you were
Right.
Not on there. You were not present at that meeting. Mr. McCormick was nominated. However, it was given back to you to wait upon if you were going to accept it or not. Via email, if I'm just, correct me, anyone if I'm wrong, you declined it. However, then that should have converted, they're putting Mr. McCormick in a sense by default as vice president at that time.
May I, may I help um also until with this um? With that being said. We would have to um have an understanding that if the whole election was gonna be nullified. Was uh without being rectified as justified. We will still be in this situation because we can't pick and choose which part is gonna be great and which part is not gonna be great. So we'll have to dump it in total. We wouldn't be able to grab pieces and say this is new, this is good and this is not good. Right, so we doing nominations, we're gonna call for the vote and we're gonna continue on to try to get past this uh urgent matter. For some, we have to get past this and uh with annual meeting coming up, less than such and such months, we have to continue on commission. We do. Um do we have any nomination, another nomination for vice chair so we can please continue on to the vote? If not, uh we need a vote. Okay, no more nominations. Nominations is closed for vice chair. Um he's a Oh, did you get his, he declined. Okay, Mr. McCormick, for vice chair, uh nominations start to the right with Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mr. Commissioner, Commissioner McCormick.
Aye.
Commissioner um Pastor Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Fly, aye. Oh, Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Good job. Uh Commissioner Conley.
Aye.
Commissioner Tillman.
Again, I abstain.
So thank you. Commissioner Benny.
Aye.
Okay, good job. Okay, Don Thaler.
Oh, we.
I'll be flipping. Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Hogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Robert.
I sustain.
Okay, thank you for that. Was there count secretary? Okay, thank you for that. Was Account Secretary.
To abstain.
To abstain, to abstain. Okay. Vice Chair has been nominated as Mr. McCormick. We had to abstain. And um so we can carry on to the next election. Next election is our for Secretary.
I nominate Ms. Tillman.
I second that.
I decline, but I thank you for the nomination.
I nominate Ms. Lee.
Ms. Lee is uh she's ineligible.
Oh, sorry. If, ma- point of order, if no one's going to accept it, then I I I I request that we suspend the um our bylaws to um go to the next person. That uh the year, you're a part of this, cuz I think everybody's been attending the meeting, so.
Right, right.
With that being said.
Okay, so what uh Mr. McCormick, Commissioner McCormick has just suggested, as if we get to an appointment or office that um no one's been here for a year able to fulfill, that he's requesting that for that office, for that time, that we suspend the rules for that office to be able to get that office filled with someone that hasn't been here for a year in order to get the office filled. And so with that being said, we will have to suspend the rules for that particular office in order to get it filled and in order to carry on and please continue to um move forward. Um, I don't know if we want temporarily suspended for just that office or um I nominate, well, we can get nominations out um also. I'd like to nominate a.
Point of order. Can I make a comment so we can move this along?
Yes, ma'am.
Due to the fact that we're, we're talking about suspending the last two, obviously, it's gonna be the last two because the other um commissioners have um declined accepting any um nominations. Um, I I suggest or recommend that we keep the last two positions as secretary and treasurer as the ones that are currently in there, just to move this along, unless there's some other.
I second.
Just for the record, can, is there anybody here that's been here for longer than a year, wanna be the treasurer or the secretary?
Will be nominated.
Any, any one of us.
So either that, what I said, I, I.
Okay, we in agreement with it. We have a vote on that. So your motion, Ms. Benny.
One of his motions was to suspend. And I second his suspension, then her motion, who's the last two remaining office.
Oh, okay, the uh motion on the floor is to uh suspend, well, it's not a motion.
Suspend, yes, motion to suspend the rules. There was a second, oui.
All right, motion to sus- to suspend the rules in the second by um Commissioner Lee, that we leave the position, the secretary, and also the treasurer that's currently doing it now. Um, with that being said, can we get a vote and start off with Ms. Commissioner Moore down there?
Aye.
Commissioner Hogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner um Benny.
Aye.
Commissioner um Tillman abstain.
I abstain, and my reason for abstaining is to reiterate, that's what I just presented before the commission to.
Okay, we got you.
Oh.
Yeah, we got you.
President.
Okay, that's understood. Thank you for your input, Ms. Tillman. Ms. Tillman has abstained. Um, Commissioner Conley.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Fry.
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick.
Aye.
Commissioner Millsap. Commissioner Cox.
Aye.
Okay, so we have all of it, all of our offices filled. We have a President, Mr. Fly interim president until annual meetings in January. We have the Vice Chair interim president, uh Vice Chair until January annual meeting, which is less than a month, maybe in a half of Mr. Rodney McCormick. Uh, come on with it, Rodney, person, what I got a point of order.
No, 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 we trying to do this.
Okay, okay, and we, and then we also have a secretary remaining, Ms. Commissioner Lee, and Treasurer, Ms. Commissioner Benny. And we have got past that for now. Now we can get into the agenda. Am I correct? Uh, Secretary of Mr. Sheary. Okay, reading of the mission statement.
Um, when we get done with, just.
Okay, I want to delegate the reading of the mission statement. Down to Mr. Hogan, cuz he is familiarized with it. That's if you wanna accept the reading of mission statement. Oh, you'll have it with, available?
Thank you.
Oh, you do. Oh, thank you, Commissioner Hogan.
Um, excuse me, point of order.
Yes.
Yes, okay, um, President uh Fly. I would like to suspend um some parts of our agenda so that we can have our speakers come.
Oh, okay.
Is of the essence, and and we have about twenty-five minutes, and like Commissioner Millsap said, we have a lot of things on this agenda.
I'd take it better if it has to come to a vote. I don't know if you're making that.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. To our mission statement.
What is it?
After the mission statement?
Uh, yes.
Very quickly. The mission of the Indiana Commission on the Social Status of Black Males is to study the social conditions of the state's black male population and the develop, and to develop strategies to remedy or assist in remitting serious adversities and make recommendations to improve the educational, social, economic employment and other circumstances for Hoosiers. The commission serves policymakers and public interest groups as well as the media, community organizations, and members of the general public. Thank you.
Thank Commissioner Hogan. Um, I do wanna introduce you one time real fast. Uh, God is good all the time. And I'm glad we are agreeing to disagree and keeping it moving on the state of the public and the state of our board, you know. Uh, we have things that we do have to try to work on, which Ms. Tillman stated, and Commissioner Tillman, Ms. McCormick, everyone stated. So you guys haven't been overlooked, your, your policies and things that you're suggesting is not overlooked, it's just we trying to trying to keep it moving, but you all have great suggestions. Um, Mr. Millsap says we gotta continue on. We have speakers here and uh other therefore, so what parts of the um agenda would you like to suspend? Ms. Benny, I'll give you the floor to knock down some of it so we can get currently to where we need to go, since you brought up the suggestion of suspension of some of the agenda.
Well, did you have something?
I was saying that we suspended it so we can go.
Right.
So we can go straight.
That's what I said. Yeah, the whole.
Okay, I got you. Okay, so we have to prove minutes.
Yeah.
At least prove our minutes. Am I right or no?
Yes, we can.
Are you spinning?
Just everything.
Is there a speaker in the agenda?
Point of order, according to the, I gotta go back to the law. According to the law, our minutes must be submitted to City Clerk's office before thirty days. Because we met late last month, our thirty days is actually the nineteenth. So we do need to approve our minutes if nothing else.
With that being said, I would like to make a motion for approval of the minute.
I second, we all say. Okay, we got all in favor. Guys, it's good, all the fans, let's get it. Okay, guys, let's uh suspend, I even part of the general, let's get to our things, I'm pass to Commissioner McCormick, uh, but uh get to Millsap.
Yes, uh, uh.
Here together.
On the subcommittee reports, down to the Employment Committee. Uh, at this time, we finally came up with the program for the Employment Workshop Prep uh sem- seminar that we're gonna present, partnering with the Michigan City Black Expo. Uh, we have our President Pat Harris, and they just had their elections for twenty twenty-three. And uh she will let us know who the members are since we're partnering with this organization. And uh she will give you the uh game plan for our program.
Thank you all for having me to this very robust meeting.
Thank you, hello.
Okay, I'm gonna have to come back and do this, but that's, that's fine. I'm happy to be here. I am the Board President for the Michigan City Chapter of Indiana Black Expo. Our mission is to be an effective voice and vehicle for the social and economic advancement of African Americans. We are state organizations with, organization with twelve chapters throughout the state. And uh we serve the state on a very large level, but in each of our communities, we are doing works to help our community. We try to partner or collaborate as often as possible because we have learned over the years that that is where you get your really significant impact. The greatest impact is found when you collaborate, when you bring groups together that have common goals and missions, and you get things done. You work together, you put everything else aside, and you work towards the goal. So we've been doing that, and I was very um pleased to accept Willie's offer to partner with the social status, because you are, your mission aligns with what we do. And you have the African American males, but that is part of what we do also. So we're happy to be here. And we're happy to um put on this workshop with uh Mr. Millsap, and he said there's another gentleman that's going to be working with me also. He said, Mr. Hogan.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, you sent me the, but okay, yes, he sent me the um PowerPoint that he had uh conducted in the past, and so we're gonna follow some of that along with some of the things I've done in my past. My, my, just the, just a brief uh background on myself, I born and raised in Michigan City, love this community, seen the ups and downs of it, and we always come back. So we're coming back now from the tragedies of COVID, but we are coming back. So encourage you guys, stay to it, work hard, work through this process, and it is a process, but work through it. And we're gonna get our people employed, and we're gonna get them employed through things like the workshop. And and in my background, I graduated from Michigan City High School, Elston Red Devils, and went to college, got my degrees, worked at Bethlehem Steel for twenty-seven years, successful there in my idea of what I thought was success- successful for me. And now I'm basically semi-retired, and I'm still doing community work. So the Black Expo is where I really am rooted. I'm, I also sit on the board for the Michigan City, I'm sorry, the La Porte County Convention and Visitors Bureau. So um still doing things in the community and happy to be here today. Thank you. So what, what I wanna do is I wanna have a seminar that will just get our, some of our young folks, and I'm assuming this workshop is gonna be targeted towards African American males. So I wanna help them understand the employment process. And I'm not gonna, in this workshop, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on goal setting and so forth. I will introduce it, though, and we will talk about it. Cuz I want them to understand actually when they go through the process of applying and then the interview. So the outline that I provided with you, uh, like I said, it it um aligns very nicely with the PowerPoint that was presented to me by Mr. Hogan or Commissioner Hogan. And basically, what we're gonna do is we're just gonna go down through this outline very quickly with you. And I, and I would love for you to ask questions cuz I'm better at that part than uh talking through this stuff. Uh, so basically, we're gonna start with the group. I'm, I'm hoping we can get at least like twenty young men in this group. And Indiana Black Expo can help recruit these young people. So when we get everything in place as far as a date, I understand that there's some maybe concern about the room. But when, once we get it in place, then what we're gonna do is we're gonna help promote and get the young man to come to these workshops or this workshop. And we'll start out with just asking them, what do they want? And that's a question, not only about the job, but what do they want in life. Like I said, I'm not gonna get a lot of to, of goal setting, but I wanna introduce it. So once we get past that, and as you see in the outline, there's some things that we cover um in that what do you want question. So we'll, we'll talk about that. And then the job search, we'll have some computers um that they can look on and do, I'm gonna actually help them or show them job searching, how to job search, and that then aligns back with what they want and their strengths and weaknesses and so forth. And then the actual application, I'm gonna have applications there for them to fill out. And we're gonna work together through that application process to show them the correct way to answer the questions and what those questions are looking for. So we'll talk about that. And also, some pe- some people in the group, I'm hoping have enough background that we can do a resume. And we'll, in some cases, we'll have the application and the resume. In some cases, we may just be doing just a resume if that person is of that level, whether, where they have the kind of back- background. But we'll go through both of those, the resume, what, what do you build and put into a resume? One of the most important things to highlight, if you're looking for a particular job in that resume, how you put in that resume, highlight those assets or those qualities that align with the job that you're trying to get. We'll do those kinds of things. And then we'll talk to them about follow-up, how you, don't just apply and just wait for a call. Call them back, call them back. Cuz I know when I did some of the interviewing for people, and I was in the, on the other side of it, those people that called me, I'm like, I, they wanted a job. So, you know, I give them a call and say, hey, come in, let's talk. And then the almighty interview, that's the biggie right here. When you get past all of this other stuff and you get to the part where you're gonna be in front of someone, and you gotta really tell about yourself. Some people are kinda shy and they don't wanna talk. Well, I'm gonna help bring that out of them and tell them why. You, you speak up for yourself. And we'll go down through the phone interview because in, in today's world, there's phone interviews now. So we'll go through that process, how to conduct the phone interview, and then also then the in-person interview. And how you present yourself, you know, your appearance, your, your body language, your, your posture and, and all those things. Some of the dressing part is different nowadays because a lot of the employers are not looking for all that, you know, staunchy suit and tie stuff, depends on what you're applying for and so forth. So, but we'll address that. We'll address all the different types of uh ways you dress for different interviews. So that's basically uh what I just wanted to talk to you about. I really would like to work with um the African American uh social stats for African American males on this project. And we'll do this workshop once, but I wanna build towards doing some more things as far as the goal setting in the future. So keep that on the back burner. So if we go through this and, and get this done, and it's um something you guys like, we can do some things, some other things with this in the future. It doesn't always have to be me cuz I, we have other people in the community that can do some of these other things as resources to us, and we should be using that, so.
Thank you, Pat. Uh, timeframe, timeframe that we were planning on doing this.
Well, I'm looking at two and a half, about two, two and a half hours. Uh, we're gonna do some role playing, so I, I need some time in the, let the group do that, let them actually um pick out a couple of students, let one of them be the interviewer and one be the interviewee, and kinda just, just so they get a feel for what it feels like to be on the other side too, so. So I need a little bit of time, about two and a half hours.
Got you.
I also sit on the subcommittee for appointments, so I, this is for all of us, um, including Carrie. Um, now that I'm the uh, I'm the Chair for the Michigan City Housing Authority right now, um, we have a problem with be, making this mobile to where we might be able to do a couple of sessions at Lakeland Estates where we have a resource room that has the computers and everything, cuz the ultimate goal is to try to do better for our people, help them.
We gotta, sometimes we gotta go to them. Sometimes we have need to go, and well, I, I support that. I would be agreeable to.
And I will make sure those doors are open if this was something that we want to do.
Good.
While I'm there, so, thank you.
The, the um twenty men that you're, that you will be seeking, is there a certain age?
No, no, I would not limit it to cer- certain age group. Because we have everybody, all ages needing jobs. Just anybody that needs a job, bring them.
Okay, and when does this take place?
Well, we're looking at the um, what was the date we agreed on, Willie?
December sixth.
Sixth, and we were looking at using the room across the hall here, but you know, if we need to do something else, if that date is not, does not work, we may do something like what he suggested, cuz I'm okay with that. I, I think going to the community is probably the easiest way to get people there.
Uh, in addition to the councilman's uh concerns, when age group, gender is also, so. I mean, we're geared for African American males, but that does not eliminate African American females.
Right, that's what I was gonna say. We were gonna target the African American males. We're, we're not gonna be exclusive.
Right.
So we would welcome any young women that would wanna come in.
Would you be agreeable to us reaching out to prospective employers as in they can provide either applications or postings that are open or anything that?
Well, that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna be doing that. That's why I said I'm gonna bring exam, a- a- applications. I'm gonna bring actual application, whereas they, they're actually looking for positions.
I was misunderstood.
That's okay.
We have, we're, we're.
And you're talking to your mic, Commissioner? Oh, you don't have.
He wants to know, when will I, wh- when will this be announced to the public?
Yeah.
Well, once it's all approved, you, you guys have to approve it. Uh, our, our chapter of Indiana Black Expo, our board has already approved it. So once you all approve this outline, then we're going to announce it. It'll probably be the next couple of days.
So with that, when you said for approval, is there any uh fees associated that we need? So with that, when you said for approval, is there any, uh, fees associated that we need to?
Yeah, I need a million dollars.
Any fees associated?
No, there are not any fees.
And in addition to that, uh, refreshments will be served, that I will take care of all of those expenses, okay, thank you.
I'm glad this is being recorded.
I'd like to make a motion if we approve.
Second.
The agenda for that event, and, and give our support.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second, we get a vote, we saw, uh, on the left, so I'm like, Commissioner Benny?
Aye.
Commissioner, um, Tillman?
Aye.
Commissioner Connolly?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Fly?
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick?
Aye.
Commissioner Millsap?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Hogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Riley Johnson?
Aye.
Thank you, we have a zero, not, all the way, all the way, no nos, so, we got it.
Very much.
Thank you for your presentation so much, Ms. Harris.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Even though, uh, it's seen in the community that we have a lot of, uh, issues, but we're still moving forward.
Yes, sir, yes, we are.
Yes.
I agree. Um, next on the agenda, I get to suggest, and we go to, uh, we went to employment anyway, here specifically, I guess, because I need to make sure it gets up here.
Is there anyone in audience that wants to speak?
I would love to have Mr. Payne say hi.
Mr. Payne, I think that was your calling.
Hello.
Oh, is that, that all you can say is hi? Okay.
Yay. We have the honorable, uh, other Payne gonna come to the microphone and give us with it, well, he may bless this with.
Right, I didn't really come here to say anything, I came to observe, but, uh, I guess it at all, I mean, I really like says that the commission meant a lot to me, I was here for a lot of years because I was about working for blacks, and it's about helping black men, which are still an endangered species, no matter how you wanna look at it. Us black men still catching hell, if I could say that, uh, but, but I really wanna say, standing here watching, y'all gotta get together. Gotta stop this in-house hassling and legalization or however you wanna put it, uh, everybody here is on the same level, we're not individuals, we come to the commission from an organization, so the organization send their best people, so y'all are on the same level, ain't no leader, no follower, y'all all are here to work together to help Michigan City's black males and women, I have no problem with that, I got a lady in my life. But the point I'm trying to make is that, you gotta stop finding trouble, looking for trouble. You gotta come here and say, what can we do together as a family to produce something that is of a substance? So we, we had, I, I loved it, and just like the pastor said, we calm, and we laughed, and we joked. It was a, it was a few times people tried to get awkward, but I didn't play that. You know, that's, that's one thing the chairman's supposed to do, is keep order, keep harmony, keep movement going. So, yeah, I, you know, a half hour y'all sat here and debated. Wow.
Yeah.
This, this is not a place to debate, when you come here, you're supposed to come here to work together, that's all I can say. I, I don't judge nobody, I'm not saying anything about right or wrong, but, uh, I would love it as a past member to think that y'all are working together. To accomplish something for black males in Michigan City, that's all I ask for.
Thank you, Ms. Austin Payne, we appreciate you, brother, thank you for taking the time out to come talk to us. Um, so we're gonna move on with the agenda, um, with the agenda, we'd like to just go right into it. Are there any subcommittee reports that wanna step out and get their subcommittee report in before adjourning of the minute, um? Okay, and then we have public comment, so can we get the subcommittee reports out real fast, let's go to, uh, Mr. McCormick with criminal justice? Or anybody?
We have, we haven't had opportunity to meet.
I know you sent the report. So we do got it.
Yes, well, we haven't had a chance to meet, but we will be meeting now, that we got all this established, so.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner McCormick, I'm on subcommittee criminal justice too, so I'll go with that, um, Commissioner Tillman, um. Oh, you're not on the subcommittee, I just look at you so highly, I just wanna make sure I'm okay. Okay, let's go to, uh, we gotta make it fast, um, can we go to social factors, I know McCormick stepped up.
I just wanna say one thing about social factors, I didn't give a report, um, I didn't know, uh, Ms. Williams is gonna, um, leave us. Um, I just wanna thank her for coming here and, um, bringing some stability to, to this board, um. I'm gonna miss her, uh, I think she did what's, what was in the best interest for her, and it was the right thing, so. I just wanna say to the rest of the public, um, when election time come around, we have to do better. Our numbers in, uh, black community voter turnout is terrible. Terrible, we are losing good people because we're not showing up at the polls. Um, I just like to say that we need to try to work, we're trying to make sure we got people ready to go day one to vote. Be it absentee or, or just have to, you have to go in and vote early, and with that being said, nothing further.
Thank Commissioner McCormick for your, um, input on social factors, we go to health, are you still health, Ms. Bennett?
No report at this time.
No report at this time for, uh, health, we go, we went to education, so, uh, we went to employment. Oh, you, oh, education, we at education, my sub, yeah.
Me and Mr. Fly on it, we are on education, um, we're waiting on, um, our approval, I don't know if you heard anything, Ms. Tillman? I was at the city council meeting, I think we're waiting on Pastor Hurt to join us?
Yeah.
Is that correct? So when he comes, we will make our chair, and we'll get right back to it like we've been doing.
Yeah, we've been hoping, also for the new members and, well, all of us, anybody wanna step up and be on any subcommittee? Feel free to, uh, I know you were new, uh, Commissioner Johnson, you know, we have subcommittees and, um, they're open for you, if you would like to join and also participate in any one of them, so. Um, we go, uh, that's all the subcommittees as of now, uh, we can go to the good of order, then public comment, then we adjourn. Am I correct, Ms. Secretary Lee, okay, I am, okay, so we're gonna go right to public comments, since Mr., uh, Tommy is there, how you doing, Tom?
Hi, Tommy Colby, thirteen sixteen Ohio State, I'd like to just make the commission aware that we do award the, the Reverend Bill Ashley Scholarship. It's a one thousand dollar scholarship given to a deserving black male from the Michigan City Area Schools. So that, make sure it's gonna be funded and awarded and promoted and whatnot. Uh, I got a little prepared statement I'd like to read, this was back in July, um, the, the county, they started a program where they named the bridges after very special and prominent county individuals, and last July, they, uh, the county commission, uh, they, they, uh, gonna name a bridge after someone that was very specialist, and this time I'd like to read what was read at the time of his nomination. Um, the next bridge will be named in honor of Alan Whitlow. Alan Whitlow touched many lives in education as the director of the Michigan City Boys and Girls Club in his many years of community service. Mr. Whitlow was genuine in his comfort, concern for people, and is a mentor who provided plenty of direction to plenty of youth. He was born in nineteen thirty-nine and passed away in two thousand seventeen. Alan Whitlow is a nineteen fifty-seven Elston High School graduate, who returned to his alma mater as a teacher and as a basketball coach. He was an assistant coach to the nineteen sixty-six Elston High School State Championship Basketball Team. He was honored to be included in the Michigan City Area Schools Hall of Fame in two thousand six. He later became junior high school principal and held numerous possessions, including superintendent of the Michigan City Area Schools. Mr. Whitlow served on the Michigan City Council in the early nineteen eighties, he was known on the council as a moral compass. He again served on the council from two thousand fifteen until his death in two thousand seventeen. Mr. Whitlow moved to Indianapolis and was director of personnel and labor relations for the Franklin Township Community Schools. After retiring from public ed- education, uh, Mr. Whitlow returned to Michigan City and became executive director of the Michigan City Boys and Girls Club from two thousand one to two thousand fourteen. While at the Boys and Girls Club, he provided a positive influence to the lives of the youth in Michigan City. In two thousand six, Alan Whitlow was named with the Michigan City Human Rights, was named the Michigan City, Michigan City Human Rights Commission Humanitarian of the Year for his generous con- contribution of time and support and inspiration to the city of Michigan City and its citizens. In two thousand five, he was awarded La Porte County Bar Association Liberty Bell Award, which was awarded to a La Porte County resident who is recognized for his community service and dedication to good government and civic responsibility. He and his wife Patricia raised their four children in Michigan City, he was a terror in our community. The bridge naming committee would like to name the bridge on Springland Avenue of Retro Creek near Krieger Middle School after him, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tommy, for that information, great information, good job, brother, you are on the subcommittee also, right, which one you are?
I'm on education, I guess.
Education McCormick, he was on?
He's gonna be with, with.
I remember last meeting, he was on the subcommittee, we introduced him into, so stop being participant with us, um, we go to the we go to the next public comment, please?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello.
Some familiar faces up here.
Yes.
I'm from Michigan City, I was born here, been gone away for about, not quite forty years. But I've been, um, investigating what I could do with my family property that's over in Canada, I think next door to you. My name is Linda Fay Aldridge Orange, so I'm a long, I got all these brothers, this is the city that probably are not. But, um, what I'm gonna do and try to get started over there is, um, garden. The property that my parents have over there has no home on it, nothing, it's just bare land, and all I can do is farm on it, so. I'm gonna get some urban gardening going in, on, in that area over there, I mean, it's not part of your economic development, I think those few streets have not been included in that, so. Try to encourage the folks that live in the area to try to at least garden on your land, make it profitable for yourself, cuz right now all we can do is pay taxes. So I'm moving back here, trying to do some things on my parents' property that they left us, and, um, make it profitable for us.
Oh, that sounds great, thank you, thank you so much.
I'll move to a drone.
Yeah, second, all right, God bless, man.